November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission meeting now in session. Always we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask Mr. Heschler to lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take roll call Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Commissioner Magai.
Here.
Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
And Chair Kildorff.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, public communication, anyone wishing to come on up, now is the time. Seeing none, we'll close public communication, I'm moving on to the consent items. And it is just meeting minutes from our October twenty-fourth meeting. I think we're all caught up. Um, motion to approve.
I present the motion to approve the the minutes from last meeting.
Oh, second.
And all tables, Commissioner Christian.
Yes.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Commissioner Magai.
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Aye.
And Chair Kildorff. Yes. Motion passes by. No public hearings, are we ready for the new business item or we can?
He's uh, he's gonna be here in a couple of minutes, but I can, I can initiate if you'd rather me to do that.
Sure.
Sure.
I'm Public Works Director for City of El Segundo. I had the pleasure of working with some of you in the past. Uh, so at this time, if you would, I'm gonna introduce you Giuseppe Canzoni with the consulting firm that is gonna make the presentation. And I'll be here to answer any question along with him. Thank you, so please.
So I was told it's actually six o'clock, so good thing I got here a little early. Um, so I'm here to present the Smoky Hollow Parking Project Phase Two. Uh, next, is there a clicker that I can use?
Yes, sure.
Yeah. Sorry. I could do, I could do manually, just let me. Okay, go ahead, next slide. Uh, so the goals and objectives, objectives of this project were to implement the Smoky Hollow specific plan. Uh, the, the parking side of it. And it was to convert two-way streets to one-way streets and provide angled parking along each of these, these streets. So, uh, the ultimate goal here was actually to increase parking capacity. Next slide. Uh, so this is straight out of the Smoky Hollow specific plan. Um, this is just identifying, um, all the streets in Smoky Hollow and, uh, at least that were, that are supposed to be converted to one ways, from two-way to one-way streets. Um, just a little project timeline of how we got to today. Uh, we, I started with, uh, I started on this, uh, with, with Elias, uh, in about twenty twenty, sometime in twenty twenty-one, where we started identifying, um, what streets we wanted to actually, uh, go, go forward with, with the pilot project. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we finally, uh, started initiating the project design. And we did some community outreach, uh, uh, here at, at City Hall. We, uh, got input from City Council. Um, we, in twenty twenty-three, we completed the project design. We got City Council approval to move forward with the construction of it. And construction was completed at the end of, uh, uh, towards the end of twenty twenty-three. And so now we're, we're here in twenty twenty-four where, uh, the city's conducted some community outreach for the, uh, uh, for the three streets that we've already done the conversion. And we've done some cost analysis on what the next phase may, may look like. And if, if this ends up moving forward, uh, they, you know, the design for Phase Two would be sometime in twenty twenty-five. Next slide. So just to talk about the pilot project, uh, which I'm sure you guys probably seen, uh, seen it out there in Smoky Hollow, but it was constructed, uh, late, uh, late twenty twenty-three. Uh, those three streets that we, that, that were selected, California, Oregon, and Nevada. And the total cost of construction was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, one of the things that, uh, happened with this project was that we actually increased parking capacity by thirty-seven percent. So from a hundred and seven to a hundred and forty-seven parking spots. Next slide. Uh, just a couple of pictures here, uh, from those three streets. Um, this was a, you know, what you can call today a quick build alternative. Uh, using just striping and signage and, uh, and flexible ballards.
And that was the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for ballards and stripes?
Contractors are expensive.
I was thinking the prevailing wage.
I was thinking the exact same thing. I was like, that was a lot of money. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that, that Elias just told me that, that also, that number, um, we got that number from the city. That also included design, um, and inspection and city, and city time as well. But contractors are expensive.
And consultants.
Uh, next slide. Uh, so Oregon, I know it's very small, but Oregon Street, just a little overview of the parking spaces. We increased parking capacity by twelve spots. Next slide. Nevada Street, uh, we increased parking capacity by fourteen spots. And California Street, we also gained about fourteen spots. Now, California Street was actually only one block where Oregon and Nevada were, were two blocks. Uh, but we, we had a lot of gains on, on California.
Are all of those spaces regular spaces or are, are those like eighty-eight or with certain?
Actually, if you go a couple, a couple of places, uh, spaces back, uh, a couple of slides back, I'm sorry, one more to the pictures. There you go. Um, so on the top right, you could actually see that we created angled parking on one side of the street. And we, and we kept parallel parking on, on the other side of the street. Uh, and then, uh, I think it was, I think we provide, we were, we provided, I think it was one, one spot for every twenty-five spaces, um, in the angled parking for handicap parking as well. Uh, can you go ahead a couple of slides? Yeah. Okay, keep on going, next slide. Okay, so then some of the feedback we received, uh, from the community outreach, um, that, uh, that the city performed, uh, this year. Um, so, uh, some of the questions that were asked, uh, I think the survey was pretty, pretty simple. How, how satisfied are you with the implementation of the project? We created this little graph there, you can, you know, we don't have numbers associated with this. And you can get all that, all that specific information from, from Public Works. Um, but it was a, it was a mix of neutral and, you know, a little more extremely satisfied and moderately satisfied. And there's, there's gonna be those are not, that are not gonna be satisfied as well. Um, do you think the additional parking spaces that this pilot project provided are adequate for the pilot project area? And, uh, it was mostly yes. Next slide. Uh, so another part of the community outreach, uh, survey that was, that was sent out, um, had to do with more of the expansion of the project to the next phase. Uh, where, you know, we're looking at permanent, uh, uh, permanent curb extensions rather than striped curb extensions at the corners. Uh, street furniture landscaping and, uh, uh, new pavement and, and striping along each of those streets. And you can see the, the, the breakdown of, of, of how that felt. Uh, there were a couple more questions, um, that were more write-in questions, uh, write-in answers. Um, I didn't, didn't provide all that in here because there's about four pages of it. And, uh, but it was, it was a lot of, uh, from, from what, um, from what I read through, it was mostly people in the red that were very sat, dissatisfied, that were expressing their, uh, opinion of, of the project. And that they just didn't agree, uh, didn't agree with the project. So I think there was a, it was, it was just an opportunity for them to speak out about that.
Did they give any specifics on why they didn't like it?
Um, there was, one of, one of the, I remember one of the specifics that I, I had read, actually had to, had to do with, um, street cleaning, which we, which, you know, we, we ended up finding out that after we did this, hey, the street cleaners can only clean one side of the street and not the other side. So, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, these quick build projects give us the lessons learned. And, you know, that was, that was one thing.
I can respond to that. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we found out through this process that the trash is getting collected between the wheel stops and the curb. And the supers could not clean that area. I personally contacted the supers to see if they have a vacuum cleaner on the side. They, they couldn't, so what we did is we ended up revising our on-call contract that we have with, uh, with an outfit that cleans and, and, uh, and, and provides removal of, of, uh, debris and, and weeds from the sidewalk area. And, and we were able to get a price from them, so they, on a bi-weekly basis, they go there and they, they clean up and they take care of that. And since that time, I've received a few phone calls that they are now very happy with that.
Good, good. Elias, is that, um, those, that angled parking requires wheel stops and a curb?
Yes, and the reason for that is these stuff, these sidewalks are narrow.
They're narrow.
You, you don't want the cars to go all the way. Because if, if you do allow them, they, not only some of them that are, are, are too close to the surface of the roadway, they may hurt their bumpers and they, they are good in filing with the city for any reason. We don't want that. And the second is we, we don't want any part of those vehicles to encroach on the walking area, if that makes sense.
That's my first choice, I don't care about their car. Good, thank you.
And sorry, and the survey went out to just the businesses in that area?
Uh, yes, the survey, we were about four hundred and fifty, uh, that, that I counted, the survey went. And, uh, and we, we got almost fifteen percent responses back, which at first it was kind of low, so we did a second trial. And we, uh, we got some more, uh, more, more responses back. So I really think this was, uh, this was not a bad, uh, fifteen percent is, is not too bad.
Any other questions before I move on from the outreach? And I'm sure if you want a copy of a lot of stuff, Elias can, can provide you, you know, the, the more specifics of, of that. Uh, so we were also tasked, uh, for, for Phase Two to, uh, evaluate four different alternatives, uh, for the city. Um, option one being a quick build option to, and, and by the way, this is for, to, to now expand the project um, across all the streets in, in Smoky Hollow that were identified in the sp, specific plan for a one-way conversion. So option one was, is gonna be similar to what we previously did. Um, with signing, striping, curb extensions and with, with, that were made with, uh, that were, uh, made with paint and ballards. Uh, we have an approximate cost of one million and approximate, approximate schedule for design and construction for, for one year. And that the costs do include design and construction. Uh, the second option that we evaluated was to now, at the corners, uh, put curb extension, uh, concrete curb extensions. So expanding out the, the sidewalk in those, in, in those corners there. Um, so that will then increase the, that increases the cost there to, to five point seven million. Um, the third option that we valued was basically option two with now roadway rehab. Um, and rebuilding all the asphalt, um, along those, those streets. Um, and you have a price increase there of about seven point three million. And then the, the last option, uh, option four was, uh, basically option three, except we added, uh, landscaping and irrigation improvements, uh, at the curb extension locations, um, and increasing the cost as well. Next slide.
So actually, well, hey, questions. So I'm actually gonna go back to your public survey. How much of those negative reviews were about fit and finish? Um, you know, meaning they're just ballards, it's just stripes, it's not, because you, your chart that showed street furniture and curbs, everybody said, yeah, that's great. And so, you know, I wonder how much the, the temporary or, or the quick version of that had an influence on their, on their negative reaction.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, I don't remember recall, if there was anything, it might have been one, but the, most of it was, I think, more just, you know, people venting, you know, saying, build a parking structure instead. Or, you know, all you did was, you know, create more, you know, you just, you know, moved issues to the other side of the street. Uh, one of the more common issue, one of the more common ones that we did read was that trucks, uh, are unloading and, and just parking right in the, the middle of the street and blocking all traffic. And they said, well, before we were able to go around, well, in order to go around, you actually have to go to the, go to opposing traffic and to, to go around. So it was a dan, dangerous maneuver to begin with. Um, but that, I read, I was reading a lot about, um, more about that. There's a couple parking structure comments in there.
Right. And, and what does that cost, Mario, a parking structure? Is that forty-five grand a space?
Fifty-five thousand for each pay.
More, more than all of that.
More than seven million dollars. I guess along the same lines of the people who just hated it, were there comments for people who just hated the concept?
I felt that, I felt that they were just not supportive of the project.
Right, they didn't want slanted spaces just off of the top.
Even though we did, we did create more parking spaces.
And how much of the people who hated it, hated it because they felt like they were not informed or included in the process?
There, there was only one comment that, I believe there's only one comment that I read saying. There, there was only one comment that, I believe it was only one comment that I read saying, oh, we didn't do public outreach, but that actually wasn't true. Cause we, you know, because we were actually.
Independent of the truth of it, right, just wondering if there are people who didn't like it, because they just didn't, they just didn't know about it and they felt surprised by it.
It, it was, um, we did have a community outreach meeting here um at, at, uh, in the city council chambers. As well as, um, we presented twice to city council. And, and people, people did show up to, uh, to all three, um, all, all, all three meetings.
I, I can add a little bit to this.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my, my background is in traffic and uh by the color of my hair, you could, you could see that I've. You know, I've been around a few, around the block a few times. So anytime you turn any roadway to one-way, the residents hate that. And the reason they don't like that is, is to number one, they have, they have to change their habits. And the second, they just don't feel comfortable driving on, on one-way streets. And, and, and because of that, I think a lot of that negative remarks we got, uh, had to do with that. Uh, that, that works in every part of the country, people just don't like one-way roads. Because now it prohibits them from the maneuvering that, that they were able to do. Now, they only can access the road one-way and they, they just don't like it.
Until they get used to it, right?
Precisely, and in this case, it, you know, the, even though it provides more parking, but to some people. The additional parking was not valued as taking out their convenience.
I, I believe one of the comments I read, uh, had to do with that Google Maps wasn't updated.
My, my other question is, I'm wondering about. Is the road rehabilitation portion, which looks to be about a million six. Why are we including that in the project phase cost? Cause, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't that work need to be done regardless of whether we had two-way streets or one-ways?
Okay, I can respond to that.
Go ahead.
So every, uh, every three years, uh, the city, uh, they, we hire uh special folks that they come and they drive through the roads. And uh through cameras, they e- even can pick up the cracks on the pavement. And they measure the smoothness of, of the ride. And they look at also the, uh, the, you know, condition of the roadway. And uh, there's a, there's an index number that, that they would assign for each block of the roadway. And based on that, Public Works develops the rehabilitation programs that we do on, on yearly basis. In fact, the, currently, the re- rehab, rehab work is being done for about two million dollars, we do that every year. So here, the idea is, some of those roads, they do not reach to that level yet, to be rehabbed. Yet, if they get the surface uh treatment along with the new curb and the sidewalk. That neighborhood will look great. Do we have to have it now? No. Would it make a big difference if we did? Yes, it would. So we included that as an option.
Well, I guess that's kind of my question, that, that was good background, by the way, I didn't know that. But I guess my question is, we didn't do this at all. Two-way streets, life was usual. Wouldn't you need to do that anyway?
We would, but not at this time. Uh, the roads, yeah, it would take longer, because some of the roads, if they are not cracked up so bad. If we don't have alligator failure and, and engineers come up with all kinds of terminology for failing an asphalt road. One is alligator failure, where you see, you, you know what I'm talking about. So if, if it is riding smooth, if there are not too many, too much crack, if doesn't need to be sealed, if those cracks don't have any, don't need any treatment. Then, then it doesn't rise up to the level to be done. This is a case where if we do the curb and the sidewalk and if we do the pavement and the landscaping and all the furniture. The neighborhood would look just absolutely great.
Again, maybe I'm, I'm so sorry for not understanding. Are you saying if we did not change to one-way streets, we would not need to do this?
We would, but not at this, uh, at this pace. In other words, we would wait till the riding surface of the, and the condition of those roads would.
Oregon, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The one-way streets accelerate the wear on the street so that we would need to.
No, it does not.
Okay.
And you're right, really, a very simple answer is to redo the pavement. It puts, it puts the aesthetics and the beauty of the neighborhood, you don't have to do it, but it makes you look wonderful if you do.
My, my reading on that is it would be better received if it was all done at one time.
It's more efficient to do it while you're doing all this other work on it, right?
I guess I'd look at it as like, the inc- what I would think about the incremental cost of rolling out the rest of this project. I don't know if it makes sense to include the cost of something that I, in my limited understanding. Would just be regular street maintenance that would be happening on some sort of a regular cycle, regardless of whether we had two-way or one-way. So, I mean, I, cause I looked at it and go, oh, well, why would we do phase four, it looks really expensive, or phase three, but. I would, in my mind, I would back out one point, one point six million, because you're gonna do that anyway, that cost is gonna sit somewhere else. And you're gonna do that anyway, at some other point. So really, the incremental cost for three and four isn't that much higher, because I don't know why you would include that specific thing here. Cause you were gonna do it anyway.
A contractor would probably say, well, if we do it later and we, then you have to reinstall all these things that you're removing, re-stripe. It's gonna cost more than one point six, it's gonna cost two point six.
Uh, one of the things that you'll typically see in cities when they put in new bike lanes. Um, they'll typically either slurry seal the pavement, or they'll go do some kind of a grinding overlay, depending on the condition of the pavement. And, but it gi- it gives it a nice fresh look and you, you don't spend all this money putting all these new bike lanes in on all this striping. Just, you know, two years down the road, just to go and, you know, blow it all out, and you wasted all this money on striping and you blow it all out and. Now you, you gotta, uh, put it back in anyways, so sometimes they, they couple those projects together, yeah.
Question for staff, are we actually choosing an option, this is just a receive and file?
Yeah, it's, it's a presentation for feedback, Elias and team is going to make a, they're gonna make a presentation to city council.
In January.
In January, and so, provided, you know, recent discussions and the commission's involvement in the Smoky Hollow specific plan. This element was a significant component of the public realm of that specific plan that was discussed at commission level and council. So that's why we're here now, it's just, it is a receive and file, but it's also an opportunity to provide feedback so that that can be reported out to, to council. I mean, I think already a good indication is maybe having some of the information on that, that written feedback. Um, to provide, I'd imagine that same question might come up, um, but also just providing feedback yourselves as well.
I, I have a few questions, um, so phase two, this is an expansion of the pilot, correct?
That is correct, the pilot was only for three streets, uh, five blocks, this is the whole enchilada.
Yeah, okay, but it's still gonna be a, a pilot at this point?
Uh, no, if, uh, we, we got, no, the, the pilot project will be terminated upon the city council briefing next. Uh, January of next year, in other words, we final this project January of twenty-four. So January twenty-five, whi- which is the anniversary, that's when the pilot project terminates.
So in, in, in other words, they could reverse it in January, right? They could say, what, we're taking streets back to two-way?
They could, they, they have all the options, the city council could tell us to do anything that they wish they would, and they would want us to do.
If only we had a new city council member.
Exactly, I, I, I doubt very seriously.
Cause I might know something more than they do at my first meeting, which is so.
And, and actually, op- option one, you know, if you wanna consider like a pilot, you know, option one is basically like a conti- an expansion of the pilot. Because again, it's all quick build, it's just striping and bollards and, and signage, and so it can really be, it's, it's easily reversed.
Okay, no, no, that, that clears it up, because I thought I saw ex- expansion in, in one of the previous slides. But yeah, the, the quick build is very hard on the eyes, I mean, it's, it's not nice to, to look at, but then I was also wondering if it's just a pilot, so why would you spend so much money? But, uh, okay, now that that.
Well, well, that's a good point, does, if, if you went with option two, three, or four, does that retrofit phase one to look nicer? In other words, do the baller- do the bollards in phase one get replaced with stuff? With, with the, with the good stuff, okay, thank you.
And, and truly, if you want my recommendation, that's what we need to do, because bollards are easily uh hit by cars. Uh, it's a maintenance headache, it doesn't look good, it looks cheap. You know, it just simply looks just cheap. But doing it permanent curb, I think that adds a lot.
So would it be, uh, sorry.
I was gonna say, with, with your, your, your quick build option, doing, you know, just signage and striping and, and bollards. Um, yeah, there, there's a cost associated to that, but it's, it's a lot cheaper to do that and, and reverse, you could. Put it in and reverse it all out for cheaper than putting in concrete. And, and it's, it's relatively, you know, quick to install and, um, a lot of cities are using quick build projects to. Um, model, you know, you know, uh, new concepts out on the street and like, let's, look, we know it's gonna be a cost, but. It's significantly less cost, you know, to do it this way and try it out and get, get feedback. Um, you know, if, um, for example, we would do a lot of work with, uh, Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG. And, um, we, you know, we're, we've been doing a lot of quick build projects with them, they wanna make sure that. They're, they use those projects to get community feedback and see if it's worth investing even more money into, into those streets to actually. You know, put, you know, put in these curb extensions or, you know, but the problem is sometimes these quick build projects actually stay out there for several years. And then get ignored and then, you know, then they start looking like downtown Los Angeles.
So that, that's why exactly we did a pilot with bollards, so if the city council or planning commission, whatever, you know, what, once the decision is made. They, we could easily reverse, but I hope that would not be the case.
Yeah, yeah, so ha- have you guys studied which, which if any, it would just be all the streets, period? Have you guys looked at which ones may not be a good case, or some that are narrow, or, you know, some that are wider would be, obviously be a, a better case for it? But are there, they're narrow streets, or are they all uniform?
I believe all the streets are pretty uniform in, in, in width, um, can we go back a couple to the beginning of the presentation?
Yeah, the green arrow slides.
There was a map, keep on going, keep on going, keep on going, there you go. So this is, this is a- all the streets that have the green arrows. Um, this is straight out of the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And these were all the streets or individual blocks, um, that were slated for one-way street conversion.
And currently, Oregon, Nevada, and California.
California are the only ones that are im- implemented, okay.
And so California and, uh, sorry, Nevada and Oregon were actually, you know, really good streets to do, because it created a one-way couplet there. And then city, uh, city council actually requested for California to be added. So that's, that's how we ended up in that little corner there, but, yeah, that, um, and then the arrows up or down. Um, that's just, you know, the direction of which way they would, uh, they would end up going.
Maybe some of the other streets, like, like standard, you know, people cruise around on, on Main Street looking for parking and they tend to go back on standard, maybe that. That one might be, that one and Eucalyptus might make a case for keeping that one two-way for people trying to find parking, but. Uh, other than that, I think it's, it's good, I would love to see this type of parking on Sierra Street, because there, that one has zero parking, that's where, uh. The, the coffee shop is and stuff, sorry, it's always a struggle to park blocks away, but.
One, one of the things that I, I wasn't here when this was adopted, but I wonder if center. Would, uh, would.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Would be better not to have it one-way, because I like to, I like to have the center as a two-way roadway.
Because it's a main thoroughfare that continues through.
As a traffic engineer, I'm telling you, things would function a lot better if we left center to be two-way.
Especially because you have it going all the way up to Grand in this, yeah, I think that, that you're absolutely right there.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a major north-south connector.
Yes. Uh, and we can visit later on about this, but. In fact, in pilot project, we made sure that we kept center as a two-lane.
Uh, so I guess if I could make a suggestion, a, you know, an explicit suggestion, it's to evaluate, um, the need to keep some streets two-way.
Correct, and that would be a great suggestion, would be awesome.
I was actually just informed that, you know, that some of the streets that were, that were left out of, out of this here to stay as two-way. Um, it's because they wouldn't net any increase in parking by converting to one, to one-way.
So what is the estimate for total additional parking? If we were to say, go all the way, phase four, I mean, option four, seven million? Seven point seven million, how many more spaces?
Whichever option you choose, the parking's gonna be the same?
Yeah, so how many spaces?
But I, I don't have those numbers, no, those numbers on me, but we actually have calculated all of that per, per street.
So tentatively, it'll be eighty-five parking spots, but that is subject to change. Because once we started implementing or designing the pilot project. Uh, once we started getting to the nitty-gritty, the numbers were not exactly the same as what, uh, the, the plan showed. But roughly is eighty-five, but it, that number is probably gonna change, most likely.
Well, and can I also suggest that, I know this is about parking, but it's really so much more than that. I mean, the, the Smoky Hollow concept was to create complete streets, uh, improve pedestrian access. Um, slow down traffic, and one-way streets help that.
Yes, particularly if you have, uh, angled parking on one side, parallel, and the driver automatically doesn't feel comfortable and they slow down.
Right, right.
And that, that's, you're definitely correct.
Traffic calming.
Absolutely.
The chaos actually causes, it calms it down. Well, and, and if I were presenting this to city council, I think I would also remind them that. The Smoky Hollow specific plan was about pedestrian mobility. And so, the, uh, Elias's comment about having to add wheel stops. So that cars aren't parking on the side, on the already narrow sidewalks, I mean, you've already got very tight pedestrian corridors. So doing the more involved concepts that, that widen sidewalks, that is, yes, it increases parking, but man, it makes it so much nicer to walk around that place. And, and have, uh, be able to have cars and bikes in the same lane, so I do think that is a really worthwhile investment and shouldn't just be looked at as. Hey, we're gonna net forty more parking spots.
I would agree. To that point, remind me, is there any other design element to the Smoky Hollow specific plan that talks about widening sidewalks? Like, we're not gonna do this and then undo something down the road?
Uh, yeah, it, it, we could tackle that, but it would really make the project a lot more expensive. And you run into all kinds of right-of-way restrictions and, and frankly, you may open a can of worms, to be honest with you, so, you know.
I, I can expand on that as well, because Elias and I talked about this earlier today, just to make sure this was consistent with the Smoky Hollow specific plan. So we looked at the exhibit, um, I have it, but it's probably not even worth bringing up, but the, the cost proposals that were provided are consistent with. The scope that was included in the specific plan, which entailed just the, the sidewalk, angled parking. And then the bulbouts at the crosswalks with, with landscaping, and so that's already included. I suppose anecdotally, you could, you could consider widening sidewalks in lieu of the curbs. I mean, in lieu of the, the wheel stop, but I don't, you know, that would be a significant, that would be an additional cost implication and. Um, you know, but that, and that, that design could be considered down the road, but otherwise, it's consistent with what was considered in the specific plan.
Would, would that ever fall to a developer? Um, you know, a lot of those buildings come right to the sidewalk. And so if a, if a new development came in, someone wants to build a new building, could that be part of the development agreement where you say, hey? You, you know, you can do this, but you need to take that three-and-a-half foot sidewalk and make it six feet, or whatever.
Yeah, it, we, we can, it's, what makes it tough is a lot of those, uh, some of the properties are, are rather lengthy, but, but a lot are. Thirty, forty, fifty-foot wide lots, and so it makes it tough to do that, you know, in, in pieces.
Hey, we see bike lanes put together that way all the time, just saying.
What most agencies do is they, as a condition of approval, they will add a fair share contribution as a, as a, uh. A way of collecting enough money so that over time, there's funds that the city can use as either matching when they go for a grant. Or if the city's gonna cough up the dough, it hurts a little bit less, because you've started to collect some of that, um, from the developers and that sits in account. And until, until there's enough for, for the city to, to merit going out to contract and doing that.
What is the funding mechanism for this, is this something set aside already? What is the funding mechanism for this? Is this something set aside already in the budget? Does that parking in lieu program feed into that at all?
It's a good question, and it's actually a good prelude probably to Elias giving an update on potential funding sources.
Yeah, so, uh, I would love to have this funded from, uh, the loop program, but I know there's not much money left in there. So the other way to do that, it is resort to CIP, uh, Capital Improvement Program, project, where every year we undertake the, the projects that are needed and we take them to CPAC committee and ultimately to the city council. And, uh, that, that money has enough funding in it that this, this could be implemented.
But I, I think also there is metro funding and grant funding. Well, I, we're not currently going after anything, but there are funding cycles for complete streets concept co- uh, projects. And so with a few little tweaks, this would easily qualify as a complete streets project, um, or elements of it might. And so it's something we can look at in the future.
Uh, the problem with that is first, it really makes it a little more timing. Uh, can, uh, in the consumes time to go through the process. And the second, based on my limited years of experience in El Segundo, because, because we're affluent city, uh, frankly, a lot of these uh, grants that are out there are, are really not fit for city like us, because that's the very first thing they look at, is how affluent yours, yours, your city is. But as, as Michael mentioned, you know, we could try that, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold my breath.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Nice work. Yeah, you know, I guess one last thing I'd wanna say about the temporary or the quick fix is, uh, you know, the quick fix, not everybody gets it, you know? They, they see the ballards and they think, you know, what, what's happened? Is this a construction zone? And I would even point to the, um, the, the temporary program that was set up on El Segundo Boulevard when they took away all those parallel parking spots. And the, the people said, hey, I don't get that. Uh, council decided to can it and actually, you guys, you guys know this. I mean, those, all those spots were taken away and El Segundo Boulevard got wider and got faster and it was, I think that was a very failed pilot pro- project. And so hoping that the phase one here, you know, doesn't have, that's why I asked the question about the people seeing that in a negative way. Hopefully they haven't. But, uh, I hope it does come forward in a more permanent fashion.
Well, based on, based on the answers, I really feel a lot of people were happy with that. And I, I drew myself, talked to the people and they, they seemed to like it. They really seemed to enjoy uh, the additional parking and, uh, you know, and, and they, they greeted me very nicely and, and, and that was a
You're a fine gentleman, Elias.
I, I don't know about that, but I take the compliment and me and my ugly face come on.
Lower reeds and everything.
I think my thoughts are similar to yours and my, the best thing this has going for it in addition to more parking is just creating this kind of sense of place that that area is missing. So I got over my initial driving down that road, ten signs, what's happening? This looks tacky and I've come around. I think that permanency would help. Concrete, sidewalk, landscaping. Do we need, and no, this is a crap.
All right.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. No unfinished business. Uh, Community Development Director Report.
Um, just a couple items to update the commission on. Uh, it's been a while, but, uh, we did publish an RFP for the General Plan Land Use Element Update. Um, and those were due, uh, we received eight responses a couple of weeks ago. So staff is in the midst of evaluating those. There's a panel. Um, and a fun grading rubric that we're going through. Um, we're, uh, we were originally targeting, uh, making a selection in December. Um, but probably we'll bump that to January to, to consider a contract award with a sitting council that'll be there for at least two years for the life of the project. Um, so it's just a more, you know, it's just to provide a little bit better continuity of the body that's going to be part of the process. Um, but although the commission won't be part of the selection of the, the consultant team, the commission will be heavily involved in that process over the, the, what we're hoping to be about an eighteen to twenty more, twenty-four month process. And so there will be study sessions, there will be presentations. Sometimes we'll probably do it at the commission, at the DIES level. And sometimes to get better community participation, we'll try and go out, um, into the community in, in places where people are gathering already that we would love, you know, the commission would be invited to participate in those things as well. And so a lot more information will come, uh, but when that, when we start to hit the gas in January or in twenty twenty-five, it'll, it'll really start to, to roll quickly. Um, the, the year and a half or two will go fast with the general plan or the land use element update. So just an update with that. Um, also, I don't think we ever announced to the commission, but we, but Jasmine has been promoted to an assistant planner, so congratulations Jasmine. So we're, we're excited for Jasmine and, and, and excited to keep her part of our team. And we're thankful for, for the work that she's done. Um, and then lastly, uh, I know it's preliminarily, uh, you know, do, but, but congratulations, Michelle. Uh, I feel like we're stacking the, the Supreme Court a little bit by sending, sending folks to the council.
I will tell you, I've already heard in a half joke, half not manner from one of our developer friends. Stop sending all your planning commissioners to city council.
Well, that's not new in the city. That's pretty typical.
But congratulations, really great campaign run and, and, and outcome. We're, we're all very, very happy for you and pleased for the outcome.
Thank you.
Um, and then I'll just pass it over to Eduardo because I, unless you have any other announcements, but also just kind of the holiday calendar for upcoming meetings.
Yes, so yes, a couple of things just to reiterate, uh, what, what Michael said. Congratulations to our chair. Uh, well done. Uh, congratulations to, 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 to Jasmine for her promotion. Um, a couple of things, uh, on the, on the horizon, uh, as you probably know, uh, there was a slew of bills that were signed by the governor. We've been going through that to see how that affects or impacts our zoning code. Um, so we'll be bringing, uh, zone, some zone text amendments, maybe as early as, as, as the next meeting, uh, or the first meeting in, in December. Um, so that way we can just ensure that, uh, we continue to be, to be in compliance with the state laws regarding uh, specifically like, like, uh, residential development, right-of-way dedications and fees and ADUs and some standards and fees for, um, and also some public notification requirements that did change. Um, that the governor had, had, had signed into law. So we just wanna make sure that we're up to date and, and, and we hit twenty twenty-five running. Uh, with respect to the, uh, the next meeting, the next meeting is technically on Thanksgiving, so I don't think we wanna have as much as we all love each other, I, I don't think we all wanna be, uh, e- eating a Thanksgiving dinner here. So, um, uh, we suggest that you cancel that and then it'd be, the, the next meeting would be adjourned to the December twelfth meeting. Um, let's see, other than that, that's all I have to report.
Do we have to make a motion to cancel the meeting?
Yes.
Ki- Ken, um, when, I'm assuming the attorney's office gets with staff and, and I guess you'll do a synopsis of all the state changes? Is that, I mean, how, how do you inform staff of?
Yeah, we do, not just with zoning, we do a comprehensive legislative update, but probably within the past four or five years, the housing and zoning stuff alone could be, you know, three years' worth of a, of a legislative update. Um, but yeah, we, we provide, provide that to council, all the directors and that could also be translated into sort of a nutshell version for, for the commission.
Well, that's where I'm going with this. I'd love to, to just, you know, have a sneak peek of that before you bring it to, uh, you know, obviously bringing the text, the zone text amendments is great, but just kind of being able to see what, uh, what has been, uh, changed and what is approved, it just, and I'm being lazy, so I don't have to go do that research myself. Uh, you know, that, that'd be awesome if you could have a, uh, a synopsis of all those revisions. Thank you.
Question, just cause we were talking about parking. That parking structure being built on Maryland and Franklin is just for brickworks, correct? That's there?
Yeah, that's the old, it, it's part of the old Wiley Labs campus. And so, um, although it is, it is overparked. I, I don't know, I don't think we know what they're gonna do with their sort of surplus parking, but that parking is allocated out to the, the various Wiley Labs properties. It's not Wiley Labs anymore, but, but just the campus that Wiley Labs entailed.
Got it. So that's not, there might be a section that's public parking, but that is unlikely.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we know. The, I, I do know that there is surplus parking from what's been allocated out, but I don't know if they're gonna make any of it public or
What their intention is, we don't know, but yeah, to my point, yeah, they, they, they overparked it. They, there was a series of, um, of, uh, of covenants for to use that previous surface parking lot that provided parking for some off-site parking for other properties in there. So they kind of combined everything into, into that parking structure, overparked it. So, but ultimately, no, we don't know what the intention is for, for the, um, for any remaining, um, uh, surplus parking.
In, in theory, that should take some of the heat off of, and it should be better for everybody in that area? But in theory, maybe.
Yes.
I, people still ask who live in that apartment complex next door, like, what is this? Well, it looks like a parking structure, so I think it's a parking structure, but making sure it's not something in addition to a parking structure.
That's a fair answer.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. And, and I think just, you know, the design itself, it's, you know, we had, you know, Paul had worked with them to make sure at least put some brickwork and make sure it doesn't, you know, look like just a regular, you know, structure with, you know.
It's promising. I would agree.
It does blend in a little bit better into the, into the environment there.
Thank you. Um, okay. Any city attorney, uh, comments?
Nothing additional at this time. Thank you.
Planning commissioners? Mr. Christian, Mr. Inga.
Congratulate you one, one more time.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Congratulations, Jasmine.
Yeah, Jasmine, that's so awesome. Nice work. Um, I guess I would also just ask, um, will you let us know when the, um, parking deal's gonna go to city council? I think they said January.
Yeah, it's scheduled for the Jan-, uh, I can look it up. Cause I think there's only one meeting in January.
Oh, and in the meantime, we have to take a motion then to move to, to adjourn to some, uh, November twenty-eighth, correct?
Right, we have to do that.
Yes, yeah, at the eleventh meeting.
I, I, I will confirm, but I, I think it's, cause I think the January seventh meeting is going to be canceled or not. It's, it won't happen, so January twenty-first will be the only meeting in January.
Okay.
Um, yeah, tentatively, there is a January seventh meeting, but historically, the, when the councils adopted the annual calendar, January first is, is canceled. I mean, not January first, January, the first meeting in January is canceled. So it'll, yeah, it's been moved to the twenty-first of January.
So it'll likely be that?
It'll be the twenty-first, yeah.
Great.
It was originally slotted for December, but Elias has, just the last E-team meeting this, earlier this week, he moved it to January twenty-first.
Thank you. So, uh, a question, wh- when do we replace the chair of the, of the planning commission?
Yeah. It, it officially, her s- her seat would officially become vacant when she takes her oath as a council member. And then that triggers the clock for filling the vacancy, which is, I forget the allotment of days, but I think it'd be good, just as we discussed earlier, just to sort of get ducks in a row as far as like, do we have a sufficient applicant pool as it is or do we need?
Replacing the chair, not the, the
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the bylaws say every December for the following year, so, um, perhaps during our
Yes, well, yeah, we'll have that teed up for, for the, uh, for the December meeting. Um, it would be regardless of, of chair.
So do I get to, I get to participate?
That will be your very last, uh, meeting, so yes, you'd be able to participate unless there's a legal issue, but yeah.
I'm not leaving.
I just, are we still, I'm sorry, I meant when we were on the calendaring thing. So we're talking about adjourning the November twenty-eighth Thanksgiving meeting. We would then have a meeting on the twelfth? And then we're not gonna have a meeting on Hanukkah?
Probably not.
Do we need to do that now to you?
Yeah, I mean, you, we could, we could also have that canceled as well. I mean, consider canceling both of those meetings.
Or we can just wait? Or do we do it now?
You could do it now, or you could do it on the twelfth.
You got somewhere to be for Christmas, right? I was just curious. I was like, I was like, you know.
I do appreciate that you said for Hanukkah.
And boxing, boxing day for those that observe.
It's also the first day of Kwanzaa, but you know, I figured I'd
The whole second half of December is just
With the, the more, the more common twelve-twenty-six, uh, celebration. So, um, yeah, I don't know if we, if we need to do that now. It's just looking ahead to if we're canceling things or adjourning things.
Yep.
Does it make sense to do it all now?
Okay.
That, that, that would be up to, to the, to the commission. Oh, one, one last thing, I just wanna let you know that especially since we have, um, uh, and we'll be getting a new commissioner, don't know, that's TBD in terms of when that person will, will be seated. But, um, just wanna remind you all, especially the newer commissioners and as well as our veteran commissioner that will be left, uh, at, 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 at the head here. Um, I know that I've announced in the past that there's a planning commissioners academy that the League of California Cities. Um, so perhaps that'll be something that would be of use, would be useful for especially the newer members uh, to go to or, and so I'll, I'll, I'll keep an, I'll keep an eye on it. I know that it's typically in March of every year. So when I get some more information, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and just let everyone know. Um, and, uh, depending on where it's at, you know, we'll definitely, you know, you'll pay for the registration and um, if it's, if it's, if it's outside of the Southern California area, typically there's like a virtual option, so, you know, maybe we may end up, um, signing you up for that. But, uh, anyhow, I just wanted to put that out there because you may wanna just keep that first or second week of March kind of open, uh, for the time being, if you're, which you're not required or compelled to go, but it is something that is, is a good idea and, and it's something that's offered by the League of California Cities and, and it's just a good thing to, to go and get more acquainted. And I think what we can do is also maybe work with our city attorney's office to probably give a more, um, higher level, um, uh, uh, presentation like on the Brown Act and, and those types of things that can affect the commissioners' uh, participation on, on certain items and, and meetings. Um, one last thing with respect to participation. We, staff, uh, we also ensure that, um, uh, when an item is going to be presented to you, uh, we look to see where the project is in relationship to where you reside and or own property. Um, so if there is a potential conflict, we will reach out to you and just, uh, give you a heads up in terms of where that, uh, project may be in relationship to your, and we'll work with you in, in our city attorney's office just to make sure that there is no conflict and if there is, you know, you may end up having to recuse yourself, but those are few and far between and we will identify and reach out to you if, if that occurs.
Thank you. The radius is five hundred feet.
There is, uh, there's two radii, radii. There's a five hundred, I, I remember, I say, I remember geometry. Uh, there's, there's a five hundred and a, and a one thousand, uh, foot radius, yeah.
So within five hundred, it's presumed to be a conflict.
Mm-hmm.
Above that to a thousand, um, it can be disproved. Um, and then beyond that, it's presumed not to be a, a conflict. And, and if it is, like with other things that require recusal, it's not, it's not anything bad. There's no wrongdoing, but there's just a song and dance that, that has to be done. Um, and I was just gonna add, speaking of the Brown Act, um, and requirements, the Brown Act is one of four components of the mandated AB twelve thirty-four ethics training. Um, and newly seated officials on the planning commission have to do their first within one year being sworn in, and then thereafter, it has to be done every two years. Um, I think it might be offered at the planning commissioners academy. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But, um, if it is, you can definitely avail yourselves of that and you get a certificate and just keep that on hand, cause sometimes members of the public wanna see if folks are abiding by their, um, training obligations. And, um, if you're, if they don't offer it or for some reason you can't make it to that training, there is online training through the FPPC itself that, that you can do on a computer, wherever you are, your phone, whatever. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I mean, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn our November twenty-eighth and December twenty-sixth meetings. So the next time we would get together would be December twelfth. And then after that, the January ninth. Thank you.
I second that.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Commissioner Magai.
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler.
You bet.
And Chair Keldorff. Yes. Motion passes by both. And Charlie Keldorff. Yes, motion passes five oh. Thank you. We will see each other December twelfth.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving.